I'll call the meeting to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, March 15th, 2022. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings in several committees. Please refer to the Select Board page on our website for a listing and application. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start, I'd just like to thank our Chief Doofly and the Carver Police Department for opening up their training room to us tonight. The first item on our agenda is citizens' participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped over our community prayer. I apologize. Ms. Bogart.
Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Bogart. Now it is time for citizens' participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? Seeing none. The next item on our agenda is a discussion and possible vote on the mitigation agreement for the North Carver Development Project. I'd like to address, invite our Chief Weston and our other chiefs, Chief Doofly, Chief Bryan, if you'd like to come up. Thank you for coming to the meeting this evening. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Chief Weston, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. So, thank you for having us here tonight. And if you give me 10 minutes of your time, I will through what I have to say, and then any questions you have, obviously, the chiefs are here, and we can go into as much detail as we need to, as you need. So again, good evening, and thank you for having your Public Safety Chiefs here tonight to discuss the completed CVA and Public Safety Mitigation Agreement. We're here to answer any questions you have to regards to the agreement. The mitigation agreement before you has been reviewed by your Public Safety Chiefs, the Town Administrator of the Town Council, and of course, Hillwood. We all feel strongly that this agreement gives Carver Public Safety the equipment, the apparatus, the personnel, the training, and the water supply it will need to mitigate emergencies associated with this 1.8 million square foot project being proposed in the Green Business District. This mitigation agreement was created to protect the interest of public safety associated with this large development project, while at the same time to eliminate any unintended influence public safety might have on the zoning articles in question at town meeting. Please understand that your Public Safety Chiefs beside me, we took the initiative to develop and negotiate this mitigation agreement on our own to ensure the safety of our people working in and around the facility, including the safety of our own emergency workers from our departments. The proposed mitigation agreement has been extensively researched and satisfies your Public Safety Chiefs' concerns. Through our research, we found that the town of Kingston had a similar mitigation for their Amazon facility and received $200,000. The town of North and Dover, for their mitigation for a 3.5 million square foot facility, received $350,000. And I should say to Kingston, when there was zero for police. The Town of Carver mitigation agreement is for almost $7 million, not including the costs associated with developing over 1 million gallons of fire suppression water and substantial increases to the building's fire detection and suppression systems that far exceed NFPA requirements. I will certainly give any of the chiefs an opportunity to discuss their particular portion of the agreement. As you've looked through it, you will see that it is divided up, fire, police EMS, and then obviously, a lot of legal jargon. However, I would like to just first highlight a few areas of the agreement, just so we're on the same page. Every item, like I said, has been painstakingly researched, and it's critical for us to provide proper public safety within the development. All the equipment, apparatus will be the sole property of the Town of Carver, not Hillwood's. All equipment and apparatus will be in service within each of the public safety facilities and be able to respond to emergencies across our entire community, not just within the Hillwood development. This will increase public safety to all our residents. The agreement has a 10% escalation clause per year on apparatus and equipment being purchased, meaning as the prices continue to rise in the future, dollar amounts set aside pertaining to the purchase of each individual piece of equipment are covered to go up 10%, if they go up 10% per year. This was a concern as of what was agreed upon today, the price might be far different a year or whenever it's ordered, purchased. Payments from Hillwood for the equipment, training, personnel, et cetera, will go into, excuse me, largely revolve around building permit issuance. That's how we decide when everything's get triggered. If you figure 14 to 18 months of development construction after the building permit is issued, this gives public safety the time needed to order, take delivery, and train our staff prior to the opening of the facility. Any personnel costs for Carver EMS and Carver PD will be paid each year for three years. The monies paid by Hillwood will be put into a public safety mitigation fund and used specifically for the items listed in the agreement. There are penalties outlined in the agreement for any defaults if that happens. 1 million plus gallons of fire protection water will be provided on-site per the agreement. This is far beyond the NFPA calculation of 150,000 gallons needed for fire suppression systems. And what could be expected without a mitigation agreement? That's the number we started at before we got to a mitigation agreement. The mitigation agreement has no effect on the project's anticipated tax revenues or potential tax agreements. This agreement is totally separate, relieving the burden of $7 million of public safety items from our taxpayers. This agreement gives Hillwood zero preferential treatment on any permits or zoning changes. This is strictly public safety mitigation. This agreement absolutely needs to be approved prior to town meeting, as there will be no need for Hillwood to continue mitigation negotiations after town meeting, and public safety will have no recourse. This agreement covers public safety concerns of two of the three scenarios that we kind of concluded. First, if the zoning height change to 65 feet is approved at town meeting, and Hillwood chooses to continue with the project, this mitigation agreement will be in effect. We feel we're covered. Secondly, if the zoning height is not approved at town meeting, and Hillwood still chooses to continue with developing the project at the 40-foot building height, this mitigation agreement is still in effect for public safety. And third, if the zoning height is not approved at town meeting, and Hillwood decides not to continue, and another developer or developers decide to pick up the project at the allowed zoning of 40 feet and up to 1.8 million square feet approved by NFPA, there is no mitigation agreement, and public safety cannot adequately mitigate potential hazards within the development site. You need to understand that. If that happens, the cost of needed public safety items outlined in the mitigation documents, as well as not having adequate fire protection, water supply on-site, will fall on each of us's taxpayers to fund the needed $7 million of public safety equipment. In conclusion, we ask as Public Safety Chiefs for the support of the board and the support of the mitigation agreement, and that you trust your Public Safety Chiefs' recommendations and all the hard work we put into the agreement. I would ask from the Chair of the Board if he or anyone on the Board would like the Public Safety Chiefs to speak about these particular sections within the agreement in more detail, or if you'd like us to move on.
Well, thank you. Just quickly, I just want to say, I did have the time, obviously, to read through this mitigation agreement, and I was impressed with the detail of the agreement. I just want to compliment the three of you and your staffs and everyone that was involved in this, because it's quite a detailed agreement, and I really think it does well for our public safety departments. And I just want to thank you for all your hard work on this. And with that, I would open up to questions from the board. Mr. Bellman?
Yeah. All right. I have to add you. This is awesome, guys. You guys did a great job reading through this. I think one of the best ones that I actually liked is that if another company comes in, they have to follow the same agreement.
That's not true.
Isn't that, isn't it? I thought I read that.
No, Mr. Bellman. This is if Hillwood transfers its responsibilities to another company, they have to follow the agreement.
That's what I meant.
If Hillwood decides to back out, we do not have to.
Right, we don't have to. Right. Well, that's what I was talking about, the first part. The first part. They want to build, if they sell it to someone else who wants to build the same thing, they gotta fall. That's what I like.
But does not fall the responsibility of the landlord.
Right. Right. So, I like that. You guys were super detailed in this and everything that you wanted. Everything that you wanted that's in here, you supported with all the information of what specifically you want, which is excellent. The only one that I have, why a UTV? I mean, a very small amount in this whole big picture, but I just.
That's a fair question. That came up actually during discussions during officer meetings and with fire officers. You ever been around these large buildings, when you talk about having to travel 2,000 feet in one direction and 1,000 feet in another direction? My little feet and our little feet get a little tired. And, you know, when there's fire hoses everywhere and they're stretched everywhere, you know, a Chevy Tahoe doesn't really cut it and all of that stuff. So usually, we found that these places had some type of vehicle that would move command staff around very quickly, get eyes on stuff. The term UTV just comes from, that's what's on the name.
No, no, I, like I said, that was, I just wanted to, like I said, I did read it. So, but I do, I want to thank all you guys for doing that. It looks great. It's so beneficial for our town. So, I appreciate all your hard work.
Anyone else? Mr. Hoffman?
I just had a quick question on, Chief, you had said that if the 100, I'm sorry, if the height doesn't get approved at town meeting, this agreement will still stay intact?
If it stays as the Hillwood project.
As a Hillwood project, right.
And if Hillwood gets the approvals that they feel they need to continue the project.
Okay. So the, like the, sorry, the ladder truck will still be the 100-foot ladder truck? So it doesn't make a difference on them? That won't change if the height does not get passed?
No. And again, if I'm at the speaking town meeting, the one of the things I will talk about is, to me, from 40 to 65 feet isn't the big deal to me. We can't reach 40 feet. Okay? So, we've got a problem, no matter what happens, with what's allowed there. We can reach 32 feet where the firefighter's standing on the tiptoes on the top of a ladder. So we can't reach between 40 and 65, they're kind of irrelevant. That problem gets solved by any mitigation we can have in that equipment. And again, it's not so much about height, it's always above reach. You have to understand, we have to be able to reach over tractor trailers that are already up against the building, that are 50 something feet long, and then you have to reach up, you know, 50 feet. When you calculate those angles in and stuff, that's why the, when you get 100-foot ladder trucks and stuff, no, we own 100-foot buildings, it's above reach.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Jones?
Yeah, I also wanted to echo Mr. Townsend's remarks about the detail and how much you're looking out for the Town of Carver and all the residents, since this will be able to be used everywhere. And I appreciate what you said at the last meeting, Chief Weston, about agreeing, voting to approve this mitigation agreement is not the same as voting to approve a zoning article. This has to come first, and this is foremost.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Bogart.
Okay. So in reading this, it looks like the fire department's capital needs are met long-term, and police and emergency, the capital needs. But where did the three-year salary coverage come from?
That's a great question. In talking with some of my counterparts at other places that put in facilities like this, we looked at this like a grant opportunity to get this funded until the building is up and operating. At that point, according to the financial study, it should be being considered one of the factors that's down in Carver. At some point, Town of Carver would have to be responsible for those salaries, because they are taxpayer as well. And so we're asking to get us from start to three years into this. And then once it's established and we see what the real impact is, at some point, the Town of Carver's going to have to be responsible for the additional officers, for additional parameters.
Because to me, I read it as we're kind of absorbing the cost for officers that are only being hired because of this necessity. So the town is taking on a financial responsibility, and then you always hear, you know, tax incentives dangled like a carrot. So however much comes, we have to kind of factor in the salaries that are coming from this, kind of need to be deducted from the idea of the tax revenue.
Well, I don't disagree with you, but if you look at where we're going, where we've been going since we did the 2018 study for the police department, we were trying to get to 20 police officers, that was the goal of the town anyway. I see this as a goal of helping that happen sooner and getting somebody to pick up the tab, but there was a plan in place that the Select Board had voted on to eventually get here anyway. So I think that we're bridging that gap, we're helping to alleviate that, we see it often, we're taking money to make that happen. But the long-term goal always was to get police department staff at that level anyway, have three people on the road at all times, and I think this helps us to get there a little quicker than we planned, and gives the funding for a few years. So I believe that, I don't disagree that you're going to have to absorb the salaries at some point, but I believe the plan would have been to do that anyway, as long as the long-term plan of the police department went. And this gives us three years of that for two offices, so I thought it was a bonus from that. I don't believe it would be realistic. When I talk to my counterparts and talk to the chiefs here, I think we all felt that we need to present a reasonable solution, that we couldn't be asking for 20 years of salary. I didn't think that would be reasonable, we didn't want to ask for more than what would be reasonable from any way seen planned. I believe that we, they're very reasonable asking for what we need to be able to support that program and the long-term benefits of the town. So I think that staffing level will, with the added, with the increase from that project being there, I think we'll be in a good place, even if we get 20 or 22 eventually.
I kind of anticipated that answer, just wanted to sit here.
If for the EMS side of it, this is, you know, we put it out there as, because we don't know what the impact's going to be. So we don't know, it could be five calls a week, it could be one call a week, we don't know what the impact is. So in order to make sure that we have the staffing available to respond to those calls and to the calls in the town, we put that in there, to add those additional staff members. And at the end of the three years, if it's not that big of an impact and everything, we can always edit our staffing model and our schedule system as far as how many people we have on at that time, as we have to. And of course, the biggest concern is we don't want to deplete the Amel's Reserve Fund, because that's how we remain self-sufficient. So this was put in that way, so that if we, we're going to monitor, see how much staff we need to add on, and the impact of it, and go continue that until, and then make the decision at the end of three years, if we still need to use some staffing, then we'll look to see what we have to do to make sure that we can do that while remaining self-sufficient.
Okay. And then, okay.
No, no, I was just going to.
You didn't ask for more staff.
No, I didn't, no, I didn't. But I will say, first of all, I want to, I do, Hillwood has been more than fair. Okay? And I just want to not say much, but they've been very transparent, and very fair, and very reputable to work with. And the mitigation agreement we have is something you probably won't find somewhere else. Okay? And with that said, if a project moves forward, whether it's Hillwood project or another project, the tax revenue that comes in from this project has to be spent very wisely. And just because public safety has tried to identify more capital and some personnel costs, those aren't forever, like you said, and I'm glad you noticed that. The town has to be creative at some point to establish certain funds, reserve funds, public safety funds, whatever it's going to take. We gave our best guess of what we think. And at some point, we have to be smart with funds and figure out how we're going to divide them up and make sure they don't go where they shouldn't go. So after three years, we feel that, you know, there will be a considerable amount of revenue coming to the town, and it's hard not to look at a business owner and say, well, you do pay taxes now, and, you know, you've done your fair share, and now we have to look at it differently. So, good question.
And then, I guess, to us and to Mr. Fennessey, maybe it's a matter of semantics, but I do have concerns about calling this a community benefits agreement. You have been referring to it the whole time as a public safety mitigation agreement, and in looking up what community benefits agreements are, this does not fit the accepted standard across the country of a community benefits agreement. I guess to read some things. The movement is centered on the concept of community benefits, the simple proposition that the main purpose of economic development is to bring measurable, permanent improvements to the lives of affected residents. The new movement is including the public sector to play a more strategic role in land use planning and urban growth. The community benefits movement gives smart growth advocates a set of concrete policy tools to advance these outcomes in ways that can be measured. Example, how many thousands of affordable housing units have been built, how many living wage jobs have been guaranteed, how many million dollars have been redirected toward community services. I have examples of other ones. So I don't take, oh, here's a good one. A community benefits agreement is a contract between a developer and community-based organizations representing residents' interests. The agreement spells out the benefits the community will receive in return for supporting the developer's project in their neighborhood. CBAs often include benefits such as guaranteed minimums for local hiring, inclusion of affordable units in new housing, which may not be appropriate in a warehouse, and the development or improvement of parks and community facilities. These agreements can help ensure more equitable development, enabling existing residents to benefit from the new activity, and opportunities in neighborhoods threatened by gentrification and displacement, which doesn't matter. So I think this is inappropriately named. I think the name needs to be changed to a mitigation agreement, because if a community benefits agreement is appropriate in this project at some point, I do fear that Hillwood will say, well, we already have one with you, so it shouldn't, we've fulfilled our end of things. So I do think that the name needs to be changed, because you always refer to it as a mitigation agreement. It doesn't address any residents' concerns, it's all public safety, so.
Ms. Fennessey?
So I hear you. And we all started with that word, the mitigation. Legally, there's some concerns using that word in a situation like this, and this was actually, the term was brought up by legal counsel to call it a community benefit agreement. So I don't know if we can, if it's wise to change it at this point. It still obviously comes out the same, or the, whatever it's called. But again, there's some concerns about just the word mitigation, because it has to be mitigating exactly what's being affected, and this goes beyond that, so.
Well, does this preclude us from a community benefits agreement in the future? Because, I mean, all over the country, it didn't mention public safety in any of these. And the marijuana establishment's coming in, they need community host agreements, that the one that this board dealt with dealt with some public safety issues and otherwise. And I am really concerned that calling it this will come back to haunt the town. So if we can't use mitigation, what other legal term can we? Because I want to vote yes on this and support this, but calling it that is a major red flag, just based on legality and examples.
Yeah, and I don't think it precludes any other agreements that come the way of the board. Each one, you know, I don't know if Hillwood have another agreement in some way in the future. I kind of doubt it. I think they've given everything that they can give at this point. So, but it doesn't preclude somebody else from coming in and giving a community benefits agreement that might have housing and other issues. There was some discussion about, while going through this process, about, well, what's the school going to get? The thing is that this was to take the issues of public safety and mitigate and have a benefit to that, to public safety issues. So it wasn't really a, it's not a, it's not a benefit that affects all citizens, that affects really public safety, that ultimately affects the citizens.
Right. Is there anything else we can call it? It just.
We'd have to go back to the drawing board and see, and, you know, and I think we're at that point where I think it should be voted on, so we get this thing moving before we get it through town meeting and so forth, so.
Could we take a vote in the affirmative pending researching? A name change? Because there's, this does not meet what community benefit agreements are. I mean, I'm a broken record, but.
So, yeah. I don't know if there's a national definition of what a community benefit is. You know, I think anything that helps a community is a community benefit, and is the agreement of that. And this is helping the community by giving, you know, a ladder truck, and, you know, a $2 million ladder truck, and all these other things that go along with that. Police cruisers, police officers. So, I mean, we, I can look into it, you know, but again, I'd hope you'd vote in favor today, so we can move this forward. And then maybe in the interim, we can find, drop the word "community" or something.
You said.
Or public safety benefit agreement.
Well, right, something like that. You said you didn't think Hillwood would give any more, so all of this stuff, we've heard, oh, you know, it'll help recreation and the seniors. You don't see that happening?
It may help them in a way that the town is not paying for these things. If the town is paying $7 million for some of these things, then obviously, there's not the money there for recreation or some, someone else, some other department. So that frees up that, and that's what this benefit is all about. And then there's a mitigation. Clearly, it's a mitigation. But again, legally and using the term mitigation is not a term that they're using anymore when they're coming up with these agreements.
Mr. Bellman?
Jen, I totally understand what you're looking at, is for the future possibilities of what we could do. This was all geared toward emergency services, and whatever we're getting from this is going to benefit everyone in this town. So it is a community benefit. It's not in the sense of what you found through your research, totally understand that. We also have to understand that they're probably going to be doing a pilot agreement for this property, and that's where we have to take into fact of after the three years, that pilot agreement's going to have to have coverage possibly for the extra personnel and maintenance and everything else on everything that we get there. So I think there are other avenues for this, and Hillwood's, in what I've found out, has been doing a good job working with our public safety, and one of the things I did find is that you ask for everything upfront with them, okay? And that's really what you're going to get. If you ask for the world, you're going to get closer to the world. If you don't ask for something, you ain't going to get it later on. So I understand where you're coming at that. May not get something in the future for it, but they've been good to us so far, so I kind of, it's.
Yeah, no, I don't dispute that. Then one other thing, it's, one legal firm had said, when government actors are running land use approval processes, which could include a CVA negotiation and attempt to add government officials as party to the agreement, the U.S. Constitution protects developers from the government setting certain conditions on the approval being granted. How could that come into play here, since we are government officials?
Where's that from?
I have the tab open on my computer at the moment.
No, I mean, is that from a statute?
It was from a lead site that deals with developing these and has a history of developing them with prior projects?
And Mr. Fennessey, correct me if I'm wrong, chiefs, please, but this was all drawn up with the two different councils, right? Our council and Hillwood's council both cooperated in putting this agreement together.
They finalized it.
So, I mean, I can't comment, I'm not a lawyer, but we have two different councils.
I can, because I am.
I was just going to say, Mr. Fennessey is a lawyer too.
So I, I think, you know, we're, we're not attorneys, but two different attorneys put this together, and we have our town administrator who is an attorney. and we have our town administrator who is an attorney who's reviewed it. So I think at some point, we have to rely on, on their expert advice and.
But having said that, I will look into see what other options may be available. And, you know, maybe if, if there is something at a, at some point.
If we need to amend the name of the agreement at some point, we can, we can.
But I'll look into that.
Mr. Jim?
Yes. I'd make a motion that we approve the community benefits agreement between the Town of Carver and H.I.P. Four, Six Enterprises LLC as of, it would be today's date.
I'll second that.
March 15th, 2022. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I guess I would appreciate if, if you could look into something because that term, it just doesn't meet the definition of that term. I'm not disputing the value in this. I just want to protect the town's interest in what it's being labeled.
Understand.
Yeah, Mr. Fantasy, please have a conversation with council and let's.
I will, I will.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the swearing in of fire department officers at 6:05. It's six o'clock right now, so why don't we take a five-minute recess and we'll come back at 6:05 and begin the swearing in. All right, it's 6:05 and I'll call the meeting back to order and we'll proceed with our next agenda item, the swearing in of fire department officers. Chief?
Sure. I'd like to thank the select board for having me tonight. I'm just gonna have some of my fire officers make their way into the room. Welcome. You got it, Mike. You good?
Yeah.
Thank you. So welcome, everyone, to the Cowabunga Fire Department appointment of Lieutenant Adam Flood, Lieutenant Mark Durling, Lieutenant Chris Mahoney, Dive Master Alex Morena, Assistant Dive Master Nina Logan, and Health and Safety Officer Adam Lazon. Although each of these fire officers were promoted to their position back in 2021 January, we were not able to properly recognize their appointment and their achievements due to the COVID pandemic. Tonight, we would like to officially swear in and recognize these members to our officer corps and mark this as another progressive step forward for the Cowabunga Fire Department and the residents of our community. Each of these new fire officers are held to the highest regard by my fellow officers, fellow firefighters, and myself as chief of the department. As with all our fire, fire officers, each has been elected to their position by their peers based on required state certifications and ultimately appointed by me, serving a minimum of three-year term. The Cowabunga Fire Department maintains an officer corps of two deputy chiefs, three captains, six lieutenants, a health and safety officer, a dive master, and an assistant dive master. Before Town Clerk Kara Dayhill officially swears in each of our new fire officers, I feel that it's important to outline some of the accomplishments and dedications of each individual. If I could call forward Lieutenant Adam Flood, please, to stand up here beside you. Adam has been a member of our department since April 2017. Previously served as a call firefighter for the Town Hannibal Fire Department for seven years. First, I'd like to thank Adam for his 12 years of dedicated service in public safety. And secondly, I'd like to recognize him as a lieutenant of Company One, Seneca District. As a lieutenant of Station One, Adam works alongside Captain Eric Weston and Lieutenant Robert Mittendorf in managing 29 firefighters out of that station. Adam has successfully become certified to the level of firefighter 1-2, fire instructor 1, fire officer 1, fire officer 2, and hazmat OLR by the Massachusetts Fire Academy. Adam is also a member of our Cowabunga Dive Team. Last year, Adam became a proud dad to McKenna Flood. I think I hear her somewhere. Tonight, we have Adam's wife Carrie and his daughter McKenna, who I believe will be pinning his badge. Can they please come forward?
Perfect. Recognize it all.
I guess so.
It is my honor to appoint Adam to the position of Lieutenant within the Cowabunga Fire Department. If I could call forward Lieutenant Mark Durling. Hello? Mark has been a member of our department since 2003, providing 19 years of dedicated service to our community. I first want, I would like to thank Mark for his service and secondly, officially recognize him as a lieutenant of Company Two, North Carver District. As a lieutenant of Company Two, Mark will be working alongside Captain Bill Froelich and Lieutenant Chris Mahoney. Mark has quite a long resume, and I'll only speak to some of it. Mark has successfully become certified to the level of firefighter 1-2, fire officer 1, fire officer 2, fire instructor 1, basic fire investigator, among many, many more certifications by the Massachusetts Fire Academy. Mark also serves as a career paramedic and fire lieutenant with the Hingham Fire Department. Mark has recently been hired by the Massachusetts Fire Academy, working as a certified fire instructor. Mark has been instrumental, is an instrumental member of our dive team, certified as a PATTY dive master and quickly earning the reputation of a first-class fire instructor, both here in Carver and across the state. I would be remiss if I didn't mention Mark's wife, Chris Durling, who has also been a very high-achieving member of the Cowabunga Fire Department for 18 years. Having been with our department for 19 years, Mark has earned his firefighters and fellow officers in my respect. Mark has asked that his daughter Abby pin his badge for him. Could I please ask Abby Durling to come forward? It is my honor to officially appoint Mark Durling to the position of Lieutenant within the Cowabunga Fire Department. If I could have Lieutenant Chris Mahoney, please come forward. Chris has been a member of our department since 1989, providing 33 years of dedicated service to the community. I again want to thank Chris for his service and secondly, officially recognize you as a lieutenant of Company Two, North Carver District. As a lieutenant of Company Two, Chris is working again alongside Captain Bill Froelich and Lieutenant Mark Durling. Chris has successfully become certified to the level of firefighter 1-2, fire instructor 1, by the Massachusetts Fire Academy. Chris also serves as a Plymouth County Special Police Officer, a Carver Public Safety and Fire Dispatcher, and a member of the Cowabunga Dive Team. Chris was recently awarded the Medal of Valor through the Department of Fire Services for his heroism displayed on July 19th, 2020, at a structured fire on Forest Street where he and his fellow firefighters and public safety workers rescued a woman from the second floor of a burning home. Having been with our department for 33 years, Chris has certainly earned his firefighters and fellow officers in my respect. Chris has asked that his wife Rebecca pin his badge for him. It is my honor to officially appoint Chris Mahoney to the position of Lieutenant within the Cowabunga Fire Department. Could I please have Health and Safety Officer Adam Lazon? Please, you know? Adam has been a member of the Cowabunga Fire Department since April 2011, dedicating 11 years of service to our community. I would first like to thank Adam again for his service and again, recognize him as our official health and safety officer of the entire Cowabunga Fire Department. Adam is now in charge of the safety and welfare of 85 fellow brothers and sisters of the Cowabunga Fire Department. Adam is replacing, replacing recently retired Health and Safety Officer Bob Tellis, who served the department for 50 years. Those are very big shoes to fill, and let me tell you, Adam has hit the ground running. Along with Adam's duties as our designated health and safety officer, Adam remains a firefighter for Company Two, North District. This means Adam changes hats and operates as a health and safety, as the fire incidents dictate. Adam has successfully become certified to the level of firefighter 1-2, fire instructor 1, fire officer 1, incident safety officer, wildland firefighter, airport crash rescue, and pump operator by the Massachusetts Fire Academy. Adam is also an EMT and a public safety diver within our dive team. Along with Adam's dedicated fire service to our community, Adam served 12 years in the United States Army, deployed to Iraq in 2006, and is currently working as a career firefighter at Joint Base Cape Cod for the last two and a half years. Adam has asked that his wife Amanda, and I believe Abigail, his daughter, and his son Aiden, to pin his badge. I'm just gonna go. It is my honor to appoint Adam Lazon to the position of Health and Safety Officer within the Cowabunga Fire Department. If I could please have Dive Master Alex Morena step forward. Okay? We're happy. Alex has been a member of our department since 2017, providing five years of dedicated service to our community and served 10 years as an on-call firefighter for the Norwell Fire Department. Again, want to thank Alex for his service and I want to secondly, officially recognize you as a dive master of the Cowabunga Fire Department. Along with Alex's dive duties as our dive master, Alex is assigned to Company Two, North District as a firefighter. Alex has a passion for diving and I'm proud to officially recognize him as our dive master. As a dive master, Alex will be working alongside Assistant Dive Master Nina Logan, who you soon meet, managing a dive team of 12 divers and six, six support personnel. Alex has successfully become certified to the level of firefighter 1-2 through the Department of Fire Services and as a master public safety diver through the CADD certification process. Alex has given me the honor of presenting him with his badge. And again, it is my honor to appoint Alex to the position of dive master. If I could please call forward Assistant Dive Master Nina Logan. Nina has been a member of our department since 2015, providing seven years of dedicated service to our community and five years of service as a, to Carver EMS, as now is a licensed paramedic. Along with Nina's dive duties as our assistant dive master, Nina is assigned to Company Three, South District, as a firefighter. Nina has a passion for diving and has earned the reputation as being a first, and also earned the reputation of being a first-class instructor within our department. I am proud to officially recognize Nina as our assistant dive master. As the assistant dive master, Nina will be working alongside Dive Master Alex Morena, who you just met, and again, managing 12 divers and six support personnel. Nina has successfully become certified to the level of firefighter 1-2 through the Department of Fire Services and advanced public safety diver, rescue, dry suit diver, and dive master through the PATTY certification process. Nina has asked that her friend, Lian, 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 please come forward to officially pin her badge. I try. I'm sorry. It is my honor to appoint Nina Logan to the position of Assistant Dive Master within the Cowabunga Fire Department. At this time, I would like to call forward our town clerk, Kara Dayhill, to officially swear in our newest Cowabunga Fire Department officers. If I could have each of the officers, please come up here and listen to Kara's orders specifically.
So I think we're able to lose this, um, you will say your name, go, and we will follow you both together. That's okay with you. So raise your hands, please. I solemnly swear that I will well and faithfully discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon me as a duly-appointed firefighter and inform the Town of Carver in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Carver Fire Department and the bylaws of the Town of Carver, the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the Constitution of the United States. So help me God.
I would like to, again, thank Kara for doing that for us and taking the time out of her evening tonight to come here and swear off. And thank you. And I would like to thank the select board for allowing the opportunity to recognize our newest officers at your meeting. So thank you. Be a time.
Thank you. Thank you, chief, and thank you for all your sacrifices, yourself and your family, for everything you do for our town. We truly appreciate it. And with that, anything else from members of the board? With that, we will be in recess for five minutes. Thank you. All right. All right, it's 6:30. I'll call the meeting back to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board. The next item on our agenda is a joint meeting with the Finance Committee to discuss, uh, for discussion of possible vote for the recommendation of the draft annual town meeting articles, Article 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, and 27, and the Finance Committee bylaw. Mr. Germaine, would you like to call your committee to order?
Is this working? Is this working? No, I don't think so.
Did you turn it, the power on?
Pretty loud. And I'd like to call the FIDCOM together, the meeting together for March 15th in joint session with the select board. I turned it.
You're not gonna hear it throughout. It's gonna hear it into the camera.
Oh, it's gonna be caught into that. Gotcha. Okay.
All right, so the first, all set?
All set.
All right, so the first item on our agenda is Article 2, Supplemental Appropriations for Fiscal Year 2022. And Mr. Fantasy, the article I have is, is blank.
Yeah, so this is the end of the year article, end of the budget year. So if there's a budget item that, a department item that's over a little bit, it gets transferred from surplus into that from another department. So I would suggest you vote to put it on the warrant and then we'll, later on, as we get closer to printing the warrant article.
Right now, there are no numbers.
Right now, there's no numbers.
No. Okay. Well, okay. Is there a motion from the select board to put Article Two on the warrant?
I move to put Article Two on the warrant.
Second.
With motion and a second. Discussion?
Just that, there's a stipulation that we will have those prior to town meeting, those numbers?
Yeah, you should have them before we even go to print.
Okay. Thank you.
So right now, we don't anticipate anything, but as we get closer to the close of the fiscal year, we'll know.
Okay. All in favor of putting Article Two on the warrant?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Okay, Mr. Germaine, any discussion from the FinCom on Article Two?
Typically, Article Two is one of those votes that we take just before a town meeting. That's why we have a short meeting before here when they fill in the last minute numbers, so that'll be addressed at that time. I'm glad it's going to be on the warrant.
All right. Thank you. Anything from anyone else?
No, so that's twenty-two. We're finishing up twenty-two.
As appropriated by the town on April, yeah.
So that's fiscal year twenty-two.
Mr. Chair, should they be using that microphone?
They probably should. Yes, thank you.
Because you can't hear it here, but I think the folks at home use the mic.
I used to be, I'm here without a mic.
Think so? Okay. Okay. All right, the next item is Article Three, allocation of funds from fiscal twenty-twenty-two free cash. And we have a fund, health mitigation fund, twenty thousand dollars. North Harbor Water District for well and infrastructure debt, twenty-twenty-two, fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, one hundred ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and six. Landfill monitoring, seventy thousand, five hundred. Replenish stabilization fund, two hundred and fifty thousand. Fund compensated absences, two hundred thousand. Fund OPEB, two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Capital maintenance, eighty-eight thousand, and emergency radio maintenance of twelve thousand, for a total of one million, sixty-four thousand, two hundred and six dollars. And I guess before we begin discussions, I would entertain a motion from the select board to put Article Three on the warrant.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Germaine? Thoughts on Article Three?
I'll take a motion on Article Three from anyone in the FinCom.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to present Article Three for a million, sixty-four thousand, two oh six as printed in the warrant. Any further discussion?
Yes. I just wanted to get clarification on what we're voting on. Are we voting to recommend to town meeting one million?
No, we're voting to put it on the warrant only.
I think we're voting on the amount.
Right.
Go ahead.
No, so I want to get a clarification because we haven't discussed this as a committee. The last time it came up, the number was closer to two million dollars. So I think it makes sense for us as a finance committee to discuss this before we move forward and recommend it to town meeting, so we get some clarification on the numbers. That would be my preference.
And I don't disagree. I am confused how landfill went from fifty thousand to seventy thousand. So I guess there are some questions that we would have here.
Can I ask a question? Are we sure that these are the current numbers?
These are from Sue Moken, the finance director.
As of?
As of Friday.
Beth?
Thought it was a little bit higher than this, so we're not sure.
All right, I'd like to, would you withdraw your motion, please? I'd like to see a motion to table this for our portion of the vote, too. We can discuss it in the next FinCom meeting. We can deal with.
Oh, we'll draw my motion.
Yeah, we can deal with this. Again, this can be done before town meeting for our participation in the vote, but we haven't looked at this at all yet. This wasn't brought to us.
Can I ask you, Mr. Germaine, when is your next scheduled FinCom meeting?
We'll get to that tonight, but I'd like to see perhaps this coming Monday night is everybody, you're not, you said. You can't do Monday.
Well, so my only question is, we have a, we have a select board meeting scheduled for April fifth. So by April fifth, if we, do you think you would have a FinCom recommendation on this article?
Sure, because then by April fifth, you should also have some capital outlay.
Yes, yes, we should.
Which we're hoping to have done by then. Capital Outlay's meeting tomorrow night, then they'll meet again with FinCom, so FinCom will have something to tell you on April fifth. So that works out. That gives us a couple more weeks. Can we try to pull that all up?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I did want to ask a question, if anyone can address it. My understanding is the North Harbor Water District has over five hundred thousand dollars in its account. Why wouldn't it be paying its own well and infrastructure debt this year as opposed to having it come out of free cash?
I think that question was asked before, and I don't know that we got it answered.
Five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and they were shocked that they had that money.
Yeah, I think Sue Moken had a discussion with them. You know, again, I'll suggest we put that off and get all these figures. I'm not.
We have why. Yeah, it just, it just strikes me that we have other uses for that money. If they have the money in their budget to pay for it.
Absolutely.
That's a good idea. Make a motion to table this. I need a motion to table.
Motion to table this?
Discussion?
A second?
Motion to table has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Adam pointed out that we would like to see, perhaps Kevin can come from North Harbor Water District. Maybe we can get Kevin Forge to find out about the landfill monitoring. There's a couple of questions we have in here that we're going to need some people on, and they can partly partake in our next meeting also. So with that, all in favor of the table?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Table this to our next meeting. We'll try to get you an answer by your April fifth meeting.
Okay. Are there questions from the select board on Article Three?
Yeah, I had a question, what the capital maintenance was for eighty-eight thousand dollars. What does that include?
I don't know that either.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. So we have the same.
I have a little answer, because I actually also wondered that last week. So I believe this is a fund that we maintain yearly for any of the current capital we have that needs maintenance potentially. So it's not new capital, it'll be maybe something, chairs or desks break.
Okay.
So it's maintenance to current capital.
Yeah, sounds a little necessary.
Okay. And then emergency radio maintenance also, that one, I mean, we're upgrading our radio systems already, so I wasn't sure what the radio maintenance was.
That one, I believe, and I could be wrong, if Eric's not here, Eric Germaine, but I think that's when a radio breaks or is destroyed in a fire, this gives them additional funding to go get a replacement radio.
Okay.
It really is not part of an upgrade system.
Okay.
It's more a, they call it maintenance, but you know, when you get, when one gets run over by a fire truck, you know, maintenance is.
That's fine.
I think, I'll find out that.
That's fine.
I believe you're correct. Mr. Fennessy, any insight onto the?
Thank you.
Mr. Fennessy, no, no problem with us putting this off till April fifth meeting?
Do the same thing, yeah.
Is there a motion from, anything else from the select board? Is there a motion to table this till April fifth?
I'll make a motion, we table this.
Motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Article Four. Article Four, fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, operating budgets for town and enterprise funds, funding for OPEB and stabilization funds. And I'm not going to, there's quite a few articles here, I'm not going to, I'm not going to read them. But, Mr. Germaine, thoughts on Article Four?
I gotta, I'm absolutely thrilled that Sue Moken and Ron Griffin were able to put the health insurance above the line. I think that's where it always should have been. I think we've been trying to get it up there for a long time, and hats off to them being able to do this. I like the way this has come together, I think the entire committee feels the same. I may be wrong. Anybody? They worked real hard to get this where it is, and this was not without some sweat, blood, and tears that they, to put this together. They spent a lot of time. I know Sue and Ron spent a tremendous amount of time working with this. And our health insurance, now I could be wrong, I haven't talked to Sue, but I understand that it's coming in at maybe two percent lower than this number. Is that correct?
Three percent it's coming in.
So is I saying two percent off this five million dollar number?
Yeah, I don't know if she already cut that.
Okay. So we don't know if that's the correct number yet?
No, I don't know if she cut any money out of it, because it was pegged at five percent. But because people didn't get their surgeries done during COVID, it was a good year.
Sometimes what they give, they take it away the following year.
I know.
Anybody on the FinCom have any other comments about this? Then I take a motion. I'm sorry, did you want to make a motion, select board?
Well, I think we have a number of motions. First of all, I entertain a motion to put Article Four on the warrant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Are there questions from the board on Article Four?
No, but I would like to reiterate my appreciation to Mr. Fennessy and Ms. Moken for upgrading, upgrading the veterans services and the COA, bringing, bringing a full, a part-time person to full-time. I think it's really been necessary in those two departments.
No, I concur, and I think we talked about this a little bit in our last meeting. I think this, all of this just goes to, to show how good things happen when we get the cooperation among departments that we get in this town, and that's a, that's a tribute to everybody, so I, I agree.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a motion that we, we approve Article Four, Part A and Part B?
I think I'd like to hear the finance committee's recommendation.
I'm putting on the warrant, yes.
Yes, we, yeah, no, we did.
We just did.
Yeah, Ms., Ms., we did, right? I think I'd like to hear the finance committee's thoughts before we, before we make a motion, if you don't, if you don't. This is the budget we approved in our last meeting.
So like I said, I just wanted to say the hats off about how we're going to split some of this money up. I think it's great. I have no problem with this. We've worked on it. This is, the budget was presented to you. Thanks again, Mr. Fennessy, for doing that for us. So this is the one you've already seen. I do want to drill down into the North Harbor Water District a little bit, because I think that, you know, there's some additional money that's there, that they're trying to, no disrespect, they're trying to keep in their checkbook and let us write some checks for them, and I'd much rather see them pay their own bills, and if they get in trouble, we'll bail them out. I prefer to see it in that scenario, but we'll find out a little bit more about that at the next meeting.
So will you be not making a motion to approve Article Four, or to recommend Article Four this evening?
Maybe I'll make a motion to approve Article Four as printed.
Motion made and seconded to approve Article Four as printed. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Article Four is unanimous.
Thank you.
I assume that it's going to be Article Four, A and B. A and, yeah, A and B here.
Mr. Belvin, I appreciate, I just wanted to, I wanted to hear the finance committee's comments before we.
I watched the last meetings.
We're still going to drill down into some of that, but it's not going to make a change.
I appreciate that.
I'll make a motion, we recommend Article Four, A and B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to recommend Article Four. Any further discussion from the select board? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Article Five, the capital improvement budget. Again, there's quite a few articles here, so I'm not going to.
I'd like a motion to table Article Five, to be honest with you. We haven't met with Capital Outlay. Capital Outlay hasn't worked out the final numbers yet. There are still some different scenarios in play. Correct me if I'm wrong. Madam Chair.
You're right, and we're meeting tomorrow night to finalize this.
Okay, so you think you would have some, you would have a recommendation, one way or the other, by our April fifth, the select board's April fifth meeting?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Motion, we table this, Article till April fifth.
All right, motion to table till April fifth. Is there a second? Second, motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous.
FinCom, I'd like a motion to tables.
So moved?
You want to make a motion to put it on the warrant?
Yes, is there a motion to put Article Five on the warrant?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Germaine.
We were in the middle of a vote. I understand the pecking order, it's okay.
I apologize, Mr. Germaine.
We need a motion to table that was made and seconded on Article Five. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we're tabled on the same article.
Motion and seconded, yours.
Ron? He made the motion, and Beth was the second.
Article Seven is the Community Preservation Committee Report and Recommendations, and I see a lot of zeros here in the, here in the warrant. Is there a motion to put Article Seven on the warrant?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous. Mr. Germaine, thoughts on Article Seven?
We have no, we have, we have. So I guess that we'll motion to table Article Seven till we get some, some numbers to fill in on. So I will take that motion. FinCom?
Motion to table Article Seven.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to table Article Seven. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Table Article Seven.
Is there a motion from the select board?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to table Article Seven. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous. And that brings us to Article Twenty-seven, Finance Committee Bylaw. Mr. Belvin, this is, you brought this forward, so I will turn the floor over to you.
All right, so we did have a, a joint committee. We couldn't come to a, a recommendation for anything for it. We had some nice discussions. So I put this forward. The bold in our copy here puts it as, it must be, for the finance committee, it has to be a copper resident, and then it says in bold, for a member of such person's household or immediate family, that comes from the town council. So town employees can't be on the finance committee, because they could have a financial benefit for that. And then I took from the finance committee, that person of financial responsibility language there. The FinCom, is this your, is this your change, just that one section?
Four, three, seven.
Yeah. So the only one is... Were there any changes to this for the current bylaw?
Yeah, there were, if I, if I may, but, go ahead.
No, 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 I just, my rationale for this is just to make sure that people know who can and cannot be on the finance committee. So, and that's it.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Germaine?
The problem I have with this entire FinCom bylaw is, first of all, with no disrespect, of course you have to be a resident of copper. In fact, you need to be a registered voter in the town of copper, not just a resident of copper. Pat Mahaw was trying to join the FinCom when he was building a house, and he had a purchase and sale agreement, but he was still living in Plymouth. And we checked with council, and council said, till he's a registered voter in the town of copper, you can't even entertain the application. Am I correct?
That is correct.
So that is correct. So once he became a registered voter and he owned a house, now you could appoint him to the FinCom. So I, I don't feel that that's a necessary statement. The other problem I have with this is that in two thousand and fifteen, the Governance Committee, this junk body, the Governance Committee voted to offer a stipend to all FinCom members, and that was passed at town meeting in two thousand and sixteen, and has never been removed from the current bylaw that the FinCom shall serve without pay. So this is just a bylaw that has been hanging around for a long time, has never really been cleaned up. So I'd like to get the wording taken care of on that. Now we get into my proposed bylaw, and, and for whatever the reason is, and there are members of my own committee that feel that the bylaw should pretty much stand in its current form, and I think that you and I have talked about this, Mr. Chairman. I have no problem with the FinCom being an exclusive board if we were able to override the select board, because then we'd be an extremely powerful finance committee. So you really, you know, we're an advisory committee. So you really, you know, we're an advisory committee. You can take everything we suggest that you should do, and you can throw it all in the trash. You don't have to listen to anything we tell you to do, nothing. It's at the discretion of the Board whether they want to take the FinCom's advice. Finance Committee, I have a real problem with the family and friends thing, because the first person that we lose is Beth Sager. The Finance Director for Social Hospital has given her time to sit on the Finance Committee. She's the most intelligent person we have on our committee. Bar none, sorry.
No, no, no. I'm surprised you exclude yourself.
And the fact of the matter is, is that because Josh is a call firefighter, we got to say to the look. This is just wrong. When we do the Fire Department budget, Beth has never voted for it, even though she could. We're not voting on salaries, we're voting on the overall budget. She could very easily say, you know, yes, to the budget. We didn't even vote on our own FinCom budget this year, even though the $25,000 grant was put in our line item. It should not have been. It should be above the line also. It's not part of the Finance Committee's budget. It's a grant given to us by town meeting. The reserve account is given to us by town meeting, so that's not in our budget. And then we took no action on the rest of the FinCom budget, because it's the FinCom I honestly don't see any conflicts with serving on multiple boards and committees. Now, everybody knows I also sit on the Conservation Commission. If I were forced to make a decision, I would stay on FinCom, if I were forced into that position. First of all, we have an opening on ConCon we haven't been able to fill since Peg Blackwell left. We have now three openings on FinCom. There's no line at the door. So I just am confused as to why we want to further restrict. We have the potential for, God forbid, term limits coming with citizen petitions. We don't know how those are going to go. And this, in my view, this just attacks volunteerism. It takes people that want to give so much of their time, and says, "Yeah, don't bother. You don't have to do that." And I don't know, that's just my personal take on it. We have always self-policed. When Kate Banzer was on, and her husband was in EMS, she didn't vote on the EMS budget. You know, we have members of this very board right now. I sit on ConCon, Pat sits on the RDA, he sits on the Cable Advisory Committee, Ron sits on the Cable Advisory Committee. Now, I understand that it's been said that, well, those aren't, those don't apply. Well, now we're going to get into accepts and ands and ifs and buts, and either we're going to make it restrictive or we're not. I think that this is what got us into all this trouble. I don't know where the original bylaw came from. I've never been able to find somebody that was around when it was constructed. We don't even know why it included silly things like council on aging in the same bylaw. So we don't have the history as to why it was so restrictive. Maybe there was a different time. This may have been before the rule where no town employee could be a selector. You know, maybe the FinCom had much more power back then. I have no idea what the story was. I just think going forward, we're attacking volunteerism. We are a committee of eight up to 11, and we're all big boys and girls, and we self-police. So that's my only comment, and I'll be very honest with you. Ron Clark called me today and said, "I just want you to know that I think it stays the way it is." So, you know, I'm not trying to ram something down anybody's throat. I haven't gotten on the phone and rallied anybody. This is just where I'm at with it. I took it off the warrant last year because I did not want a floor fight with the Select Board. I wanted it to be an amicable arrangement, and that's why I withdrew the motion. But to leave it the way it's currently proposed is, in my view, a kind of a slap in our face, and maybe to change it to something as radical as what I proposed is a slap in your face, and I don't want to see that happen on either side of this.
Well, just, we've got an opinion from Town Council that if officer means anyone sitting on a board or committee, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'm concerned about, or a member of such person's household or immediate family. So if my wife sits on zoning board and library trustee, does that mean I can't serve in the FinCom because a member of my household is on another committee?
From what I remember, from what Town Council said, is that if you're an employee, all right, the wife or family member of that household, which is immediate family, a person of household or immediate family, okay, I took that from Town Council, all right? That means that anything, if you are a family member, it serves for the town as an employee, all right, you can't vote. I don't think it said anything about.
Well, except, the way the sentence goes, except that no elected or appointed town officer or regular town employee or person holding a position to finish or, so it's got all three lumped together. Or a member of such person's household or immediate.
Mr. Chair, I don't believe what Town Council meant was to insert this phrase, town employee or member of household. What Town Council actually said was, that's part of open meeting law. They would have to recuse themselves. That doesn't need to be in there. So I kind of agree with Mr. Jermaine on that point, but in terms of, sort of on another board or committee, that's actually what Council said, the way it's written now.
A family member versus, I'm talking about, this reads as if a family member.
Mr. Belvin reads it's a family member. The way it's currently written, that doesn't mean that if you have a family member on another board or committee. It means.
Well, I'm looking at what's being proposed for it.
If I could, I.
What I'm actually saying is that I kind of like the way it's written now as well, because it doesn't mean that because your wife serves on Board X, therefore you can't serve on the FinCom. It says you can't serve on Board X and serve on the FinCom.
And again, it's for discussion purposes. I don't know why, if the intent is simply that if you serve on the FinCom, you can't serve in any other committee. It just doesn't state, like the capital outlay used to state, if you are on the Finance Committee, you cannot be in any other board or committee, period. Why all the color added around this? And then if you want to add something about, if you want to make a decision as to whether if you're married to an employee of the town, and you want to make that exception.
No, I don't think that needs to be, I mean, that's not the way it is now, and I.
I just think it could be somewhat similar. I mean, what's the intent? The intent is you can only be on the Finance Committee and no other committee or board. Just say that. This is a lot of flowery language to just state.
I think Mr. Holmes has been waiting for a while, and if he could, Mr. Holmes, I have a simple proposal that I think may solve this whole thing.
Mr. Fennessey also just.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Right, Mr. Holmes, you've been waiting for a while.
Yeah, so, you know, I agree with a lot of what Ron just said, in the sense that I would like to better understand the intent of the bylaw in the eyes of the five members of the Select Board, right? It's going to eventually be essentially your recommendation, right, on what the language of this bylaw should be, and therefore, better understanding what you think the intent of this bylaw should be helps us zero in on what the language should look like. I personally don't love the current language. I don't love the current language. I don't love the current proposed language that's in the draft law we're looking at. I think it lends itself to be too ambiguous. If I remember correctly, when Town Council rendered their opinion, it stated what Bob said, that you can sit in an office of the town if you serve on a board or committee, if that board or committee was established by state statute. So things like ad hoc committees don't count.
That's correct.
But there are other committees in this town that have budgets, that have, you know, that are factored into the finances of the town, i.e. the Recreation Committee. That's not established by state statute that I'm aware of. Maybe it is.
They have a budget.
But they have a budget, right? So I would think theoretically, the intent of this bylaw is not for a FinCom member to serve on the Recreation Committee. It would be to prohibit them from serving on the Recreation Committee, yet that doesn't satisfy the officer's clarification by Town Council. So with all that being said, not to belabor the point, but I personally think that the bylaw has to be what Ron suggested, like the old capital outlay bylaw, that says you cannot serve on any other boards or committees, or it has to allow FinCom the ability to serve on other boards and committees and recuse themselves from votes of potential conflicts of interest.
As they say.
And I think, I think further evidence of the fact that, I think further evidence of the fact that the current language is too ambiguous is the fact that we are in the situation we are in. We have multiple members of the current Finance Committee that serve on other boards and committees, that have budgets, that weren't established by state statute, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And 10, 15 years from now, a lot of us may not be sitting in these chairs to share what we now know about this bylaw and the intent of this bylaw, and I think it needs to be clear and specific on what the intent is. To try, 10 years from now, to interpret this language, to better understand what boards it appeals to or applies to, and which ones it doesn't, is far too complicated, in my opinion.
So a couple of things, and I just want to, I would agree with much of what you said, and I think when I served on the FinCom, and I think with Mr. Carter as chairman, the understanding was that if you were on the FinCom, you weren't on any other boards or committees. That's just, that was the understanding. I spoke to multiple people that were on there, and that was always the understanding. And I would agree that much of the language in this FinCom bylaw is ambiguous at best. It certainly is, is not the language I would prefer. I think you all know me, I like nice, clear, concise language. But I also know that we're looking at a very long town meeting already. We haven't, I think before we change a lot of this language, it would be good to have something from council that's clear and concise. We don't have that. But I think there are a couple of issues in this current Finance Committee bylaw that we clearly need to clear up. One is the references to the COA. I don't think anyone knows why they're there, but I think they probably need to be removed. It may just be a typo. 43 is the Finance Committee bylaw, 44 is the COA bylaw. It may just be that somebody, there was a typo when they were printing out the bylaw. I don't know. The other section that needs to clearly be changed is 4.3.6, that talks about the members of the Finance Committee accepting the chairman and the secretary serving without pay, clearly.
But if I may point a board, Mr. Chairman. I think that that was added in, and maybe John can let some, have some light on this. I think that was added in because everybody knows that everybody that gets a stipend in this town gets a W-2 form. We're taxed, we pay state and federal taxes off that W-2 form, so we don't get a 1099, we don't get a non-employee compensation thing, we get a W-2 form, which, as far as I'm concerned, W-2 means you're an employee. The bylaw specifically forbids a town employee. Maybe that's the reason why it said you shall serve without pay. So now you got to remove the language of the employee part, if you're going to take out the language about, which they've already passed in 2016 to pay everybody. So technically, if we get into those nuts and bolts, then this bylaw has been skirted since 2016 on just that topic.
Well, you know what, that's a good, that's a good point, Mr. Jermaine, that I hadn't considered, so I appreciate you bringing that up. Mr. Belvin?
So would it be better to pull this so the FinCom can come back with other ones for our following?
That's my recommendation as well. I think we should pull this whole thing and just come back at a future point with a, have to talk into Town Council with a morifying bylaw.
Believe me when I tell you, I'd like to see this get straightened out, too, and if it is the desire of everybody to concur that, it can be like the old capital outlay bylaw, which I thought was ridiculous to have it be so restrictive, and yet we didn't have that same wording in FinCom. So now eliminate the entire FinCom bylaw and put in some simple language that says what you can and can't do, and if you're on FinCom, you can't do anything else. But I caution everybody, because there's always unexpected fallout. So we have two people sitting right here that could be unexpected fallout. Now, it says, talks about financial responsibility, and I've defined what that is in the bylaw change, but in the current bylaw, it does not. So I would argue the RDA, and Pat and I are dear friends, the RDA is a, they have their own checkbook. So at what point, where does the financial responsibility come into play here? The things the RDA does could have a direct impact on the financial.
Mr. Belvin, this was your proposal. Were you willing to pull it?
Okay, yes. Or do we want to have it in here and just say, the only thing that we want to make for a change is to strike out council on aging?
Why don't we just put it all up and present it once, maybe it falls to town meeting.
Yeah, I agree. I like doing these things one time and getting them done.
Because now you're standing before town meeting, and you're saying, well, it's going to pull this sentence out, and then the fall will deal with the rest of this. And I just think that.
I have a simple suggestion, that at some point before the fall town meeting, all of us get together in a room with Town Council, so that we're not going back and forth.
I think that's a good idea.
And just get it done one night.
Mr. Fennessey, we don't need a motion.
You should put a motion.
I'll make a motion to pull Article 27.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Just to make sure that this is resolved for the fall town meeting that we have. Really, we really, this is something that's.
I don't disagree with you.
I just want to say one thing is, over my many years of research in this town, and I have to say, our town reports, you can go to a town library and look under their resources, and look at the old town reports. FinCom was super important. I just want to let you guys know, you're not like me or what I say or do, but I want to let you know, FinCom has always been very important in this town. They watched, they were our watchdogs for our money. They're very important. So if you look back on those, when you were FinCom, you were looking at everything.
Well, I think that FinCom takes the role of the apolitical stance, because, let's face it, to be a member of the Select Board, you got to run, you got to get elected, so it becomes politics. Whether you like it or you don't, it becomes politics. FinCom can step back from that, because in essence, we have no skin in the game. We're not worrying about reelection, we're not worrying about not getting reelected, so we can look at things a little bit differently, perhaps, than a Select Board member can. I know that Middleborough is an elected FinCom, and they got to be very careful how they do stuff, because whether you like it or you don't, it's an elected position. So, you know, there's the pluses and the minuses, so.
Mr. Jermaine, is there anything else from the FinCom? It looks like we've completed our portion of the agenda.
I don't see any pizzas.
We didn't vote.
I can motion to.
Finish that vote.
Didn't we vote?
No. We didn't motion a second. Discussion?
All in favor?
What did you just vote on?
Full Article 27.
So, well, can I take one minute, please?
Before you do, I just want to take a minute before you folks adjourn, just to thank the FinCom for all your hard work on these things. I know particularly how hard you work. I was on the FinCom for several years, and I appreciate all the hard work you folks put into it.
I got to tell you, we have, without a doubt, the best Finance Committee that we've had in a long time. This is so diverse, with the exception of Ron. It's so diverse, but this is what we've got, and we even let him come sometimes. Next meeting, can we do, you don't like Mondays, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays, I suppose.
Oh, no, I can do Monday, how about Monday to 28? That would give Beth plenty of time.
You? Everybody else?
Beth?
You want to try to do, make it like a 6:30? We'll do a little bit earlier, so we're not banging around till 10 o'clock.
This will be a joint meeting.
Either by capital, we'll be invited, but we'll be dealing with some of the other stuff that's.
Yeah, we're going to need the Finance people.
We'll need the Finance people there, we're going to need.
Because we're going to have some of those questions answered on this.
I'll get with Bob and see if we can't get Kevin Tracy and Kevin Forge and get some answers to that capital maintenance thing and stuff, and we'll do.
Capital, right?
Okay, so what's the pleasure, 6 o'clock or 6:30?
6:30.
6:30, everybody?
28.
28?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now I'll take a motion.
It's already on the floor.
No, a second. Motion made, seconded, to adjourn the FinCom meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're out. We're out.
All right. Thank you, folks.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you coming.
We appreciate the job you guys are doing too.
All right. The next item on our agenda is the discussion, the possible vote on all remaining town meeting articles, including the Town Administrator bylaw. Mr. Fennessey or Ms. Weston, I believe there are a couple of articles that we haven't voted to put on the warrant yet, so why don't we take care of those before we move on to the Town Administrator bylaw?
Just number eight.
Number eight?
The collective bargaining agreement.
Okay. Now, obviously, we don't have any numbers, but...
No, all three are in negotiation for that.
Yeah, that's the only one we haven't...
Except...
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can we take like two minutes and a break, so we can just clear it out and not disrupt you guys?
Absolutely. We'll take a five-minute recess.
Yes.
Yes. All right, call the meeting back to order? It's a mayoral. Mayoral. We're back to our 7:15 discussion item, discussion and possible vote on all remaining annual town meeting articles, including this Town Administrator bylaw. So, first is Article 8. We have not put Article 8 on the warrant yet. So Article 8 is collective bargaining agreements.
I move that we put Article 8, collective bargaining agreements, on the warrant.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is discussion from the board?
Just wanna make it clear that we don't have anything in draft form for this or anything, so putting it on the warrant is fine, but if we don't need it, we pull it, if it's not ready.
Yeah, if you don't need it, you just all make a motion at town meeting.
Right.
And it fails for lack of motion.
Yeah, that's right.
Anything else?
We'll have something, 'cause one unit is already in agreement. We have two we're working on now.
Okay, and which ones are these?
It's the dispatches, the DPW, and the clerical.
Okay.
Anything else? Is there a motion to put Article 8 on the warrant?
I made that move.
We did that. We did a second.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous, thank you. And the next is Article 28, which is the Town Administrator bylaw. We've discussed this quite a bit at a number of meetings, but we have never taken a mo... Made a motion to either approve or not approve the total bylaw, so...
I make a motion that we approve Article 28, Town Administrator bylaw change, for purposes of discussion.
All right.
A second.
All right, motion and a second. Discussion?
If I may, so I just wanted to ask our current Town Administrator, are you... Because you provided us with some very good insights about restrictions on the Town Administrator, particularly in his or her hometown. So I just wanted to know if you felt that this helped...
Language.
Helped that the incidents that you spoke of?
Yeah, I think one of the concerns that came up was whether a Town Administrator can hold any other appointed or elected position elsewhere.
Right.
And appointed even meaning appointed to a non-ministerial board.
Right.
Like a Board of Directors of somewhere. As long as it doesn't affect the work of the Town Administrator in the town.
Right.
And this seems to take care of that.
That's good, yeah, because we did say in other municipalities or organizations too, so that hopefully covered that.
Mr. Belvin?
Yeah, the main... I agree wholeheartedly. I do have just the issue of when this was first, the Town Administrator bylaw, if I remember correctly, when it was first proposed, I think when I first moved in, or whatever. The main point was that the Town Administrator would have all of his duties would be here in the town. That that's the point of the Town Administrator. We want you to work here full-time for the town, to be here for the town 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days, all right? That you're at our back and call, to be here and not to have other jobs that would pull you away in one shape, form, or another. That being said...
The original bylaw, Mr. Belvin, didn't prohibit a Town Administrator from doing something in his own town.
Or on his own time.
Or on his own time. It didn't allow it either. It didn't say, it didn't speak, didn't speak to the issue at all. But what we proposed here, the Town Administrator still says, "Shall devote full-time to the office and shall not hold any other elected or appointed office in the town of Carver." And then it goes on to talk about the things he or she can or cannot do. And I think it's pretty inclusive, but doesn't limit the person to having his own life as well.
I understand that.
I don't think we have the right to do that.
No, I understand that. The idea was that it also said that it could be approved by the Town... The Board of Selectmen can go ahead and allow it.
Well, we've changed that, we've gotten rid of it.
No, I totally understand that, and I'm all in favor. I just wanna like... My feeling is a Town Administrator, with the amount of money that we spend for a Town Administrator, that that should be sufficient to live on or whatnot. So secondary jobs are secondary jobs. But, you said, I'm for this, I have no problem with it, I just wanna make sure it's clear that my intent would be that we have a Town Administrator that works for the town of Carver.
It says that. It's very clear, I think.
No, I know that.
Anyone else? Mr. Hoffman?
My only concern is, I just don't wanna make this too restrictive, so if people that are looking to apply for the Town Administrator job, whether now or in the future, they'll say if they're looking between Carver and another town, they'll say, "Well, this is too restrictive. I'm gonna apply at X instead." So I'm just kinda asking Mr. Fennessey's opinion, if you don't mind, on what would you think as far as if...
It is restrictive. Most towns do not have any restrictions, you know, like that. A lot of towns have restrictions like you have in your original bylaw, that with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, you know? And then they make a decision whether they wanna apply or not. But from taking myself out of the picture, when I read this, I would think there's enough leeway there to, if, you know, if, say, you sell real estate on a Sunday, and, you know, you wanna be a real estate agent on a Sunday, you know, there's enough leeway there that they can do that, because that's their time. You're not gonna pay them 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It's a lot of overtime, you know, to pay out. So it's, you know, I... It wouldn't stop me from applying, and I don't think it'll stop many people.
No, that's good to know. Thank you for asking.
It's just a lot more verbiage than you normally would see in an application, you know, in a posting, you know, for a position.
'Cause it's kinda like the FinCom bylaw that we just talked about, there's just so much verbiage in there that it just gets confusing after a while, and you don't wanna... Like, I know we came up with a lot of the different scenarios, so did we miss one that all of a sudden it comes up, "Well, you didn't have that," so you gotta... Sometimes less is more.
Right, but I think, I mean, I know I was responsible for writing a lot of this particular section, but I think that I tried to make it address our concerns, our previous concerns, what you had a board that just let a TA do whatever, but also allowing that person to do something on his own, his or her own time, and it's outside of full-time hours. That's really the only, you know, the main restriction. And the ones that, if someone applies to the position and tells us, "Look, I'm also, as Mr. Fennessey did, I'm still a lawyer, I'm not gonna stop being a lawyer," then the board has to approve that.
But that's not in this bylaw?
Yes, it is. I'm sorry, it is. It's the last part of the last sentence. Or activities that are required under an existing contractual agreement, the existence of which was communicated to the select board prior to appointment, which, in Mr. Fennessey's case, for example, he did.
Although, I'm not practicing just to put it on record. I just have one case that's hanging.
That's on you.
And it's a pro-voto case that's hanging.
And I guess just for myself, I do have concerns about 3.3.3.4. I, perhaps alone, I did like the former language. I agree that some people disagreed with what some former members of the board allowed, but I still like the language that gives the select board the right to approve or disapprove something. I understand we've addressed a lot of concerns with the additional language Ms. Hewin's put in this section, and I appreciate all the hard work you did on it, but I don't think you could take everything into account. You never know what's gonna come down the road in three, or four, or five, or 10 years. And I just think that the language we had that left it up to the board to decide was good language. And I do think that somebody applying for this position could look at this and say, "Well, I'm not gonna go through that." So, I appreciate the work everyone did, and I agree with many of the things in Article 28, but I disagree with that last...
Can I make a comment? So, just, you saying that drew me to look at another section, and it's the last line that's involved. It says, "Activities that are required under existing contractual agreement, the existence of which was communicated to the select board prior to appointment to the position." But what happens if it occurs during the... Then I think the Board of Selectmen should have a say in whether they...
I just, my concern, and I... This is why, from these different bylaws, I always lean towards simple language rather than more languages. We've thought of a lot of things here, and it's a lot of hard work, and I appreciate that, and we just may not agree. But I think... Just let me finish my sentence, that I think you can't anticipate everything that's gonna happen. You just... There could be activities that a Town Administrator could be doing 10 years from now that nobody's even thought of today. You just don't know. So, that's my issue with this last section. Mr. Belvin?
So, most bylaw changes that have come through is because something happened, all right, that people didn't like.
Yeah.
All right, that's why the changes come back. I mean, not all the time, but the Selectmen bylaw, that's a perfect example of, I mean, you had a police officer that became a Selectman, and people didn't like that. I turn around and really, as long as they recuse themselves from certain activities, then fine. That didn't happen, and that person got in trouble for it on one occasion. So, you look at that and say, "Well, that's why the bylaw got changed." And this one here, something happened, all right? That we looked at was, we here that are sitting now saw that that's an issue. Having a town official that actually working for one of the most highest taxpayers in the town could possibly be an issue, all right? So, that's why this change we really looked at, and we've looked at it a lot. If another board comes up in the future, and if town meeting approves this, then great, no problem. And if they wanna change it for another board to come in and say, "You know what? We wanna change this back the way it was," then that's fine. That's their ability, but my feeling is, is that taking out those words, nor engage in any business or occupation during such service, unless the action is approved in advance by the Board of Selectmen, I think that being stricken is important. It basically says, "Yeah, there was an issue, and this is how we've dealt with that issue." And if another board comes up and they feel that they wanna revert it back, then they have that ability, but it's up for a vote of the membership that's here if they wanna push this forward or not.
That's exactly right, and we've spent a lot of time debating this article. Ms. Weston, this article is on the warrant, correct? We've already put it on the warrant.
Yes.
Is there any other discussion about Article 28?
I have a question, which I think I already know the answer, but I'm gonna ask it anyways. So Article 28, if we have 3.1.1.1, 3.1.1.2, 3.3.1.4, and 3.3.3.4, so basically, there are four amendments we're making to this bylaw.
Yes, there are multiple changes.
We're not changing the entire bylaw.
Right, right, so just the four. So when we take a vote, we're voting to approve all four?
Yes, we're voting to approve the amended bylaw.
Okay.
Which is all of what we're... The changes we made.
Okay. So, is it possible to break it down one by one? The only reason I'm asking is, I'm still not 100% sold on 3.3.3.4. The others I agree with.
Mr. Fennessey, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, you can say a motion to support.
I think we've already taken those votes. I think we already took those votes individually at different times.
Except for 3.3.4. What happened with that one was we sent the bylaw out to everyone at the following meeting. Sarah had changes to that section, and those got put on, then I think some more suggestions came with that, and that's what you see here.
Okay.
And I believe at the last meeting, you said, "Can you send the entire bylaw?"
That's right. I wanted the whole board, I wanted the board to see the entire bylaw as a whole.
So that section 3.3.3.4 was actually not voted in with this wording?
So, Mr. Fennessey, it's your opinion, we could present the town meeting, because if we're doing different votes, they have to accept the bylaw as a whole.
Right.
Correct?
Right. So, we... At town meeting, we as the motioning board of putting this up here, all right, we can turn around and break it down by each one. We can say, "Mr. Moderator, we'd like to break this into four different parts, A, B, C, and D, all right, where A is 3.1.1.1, B is 3.1.1.2, and 3.3.1.4, and then 3.3.3.4." Now, we can break that down as A, B, and C, and I'd like to vote on each section individually, if that's available, and more than likely he would, so we can turn around and then take it piece by piece.
I'm fine with that.
Why not do that here? So we're not doing that.
I'm fine with that. Does anyone oppose to that?
To what?
To the four separate votes.
No.
All right, so the only one... Ms. Weston, do you have the votes with you on the previous... No, that's fine. I believe we've taken them. Would the board prefer to take...
Do it individually now?
Again? Okay.
Okay.
All right, so let's talk about 3.1.1.1 first.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, discussion on 3.1.1.1? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the first part is unanimous. 3.1.1.2.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
3.1...
Somebody said no.
I said no.
Okay. So, four to one. Four to one, Ms. Bogart, you were in favor, correct?
Yes, she was.
Okay. I'm sorry, 3.3.1.4.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. If you could just give me a second to read 3.3.1.4 again. Okay. Any discussion on this? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. 3.3.3.4.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No.
No.
Three to two. All right. Ms. Weston, there are no further articles to be put on the warrant, correct? Going once? All right.
I just wanted to point out on your warrant, there's one article that's not numbered, it's highlighted, and that's unpaid bills.
What page is that?
Should be in the beginning.
Okay.
It's not numbered. It's between the two.
Okay.
It's on this floor.
So...
Oh, yeah. Yes. Place holder for unpaid bills.
Currently none, but we're waiting to hear from the Finance Director to confirm that.
So, okay. Why don't we... Go ahead, Mr. Belvin.
I'll make a motion that we put on the warrant, place holder for unpaid bills.
So we are... So we are, I'm sorry, we already have, I took out, I just wanted to, you know, I took out the numbering because we currently did not have any, I just wanted to explain.
We already put this on the warrant?
I thought we did.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Just in case there were questions on why it was shaded out and not numbered.
All right. All right, minutes, licenses, topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair, 48 hours in advance.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, about this, the warrant here, because we have discussion and possible vote on all remaining articles, well, it says remaining articles. Just remaining articles.
You're good?
Yeah, I'm fine, I can't bring up the others thing, okay.
All right, minutes, licenses, topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. Our next meeting is April 5th, and the approval of the minutes of March 1st.
Mr. Chair, I have some brief amendments to those that I got to Mrs. Weston a little too late. Shall I read them?
Yes, please do.
So on page one, under citizens' participation, after the phrase, to the warrant article wells at Cranberry Village, I wanted to insert a hyphen, that Cranberry Village wants to own them, not lease them, hyphen, which Ms. McCall did state. On page two, at the top, the first sentence, it starts with Hewens stated it is important to keep these issues separate, I wanted to insert that I said that is the support of the litigation agreement versus supporting or not supporting the project. The second paragraph down, at the end of that sentence, Mr. Chief Dufulley said, does not want town to miss this opportunity, and they, one of them, one of the chiefs actually said, because they want to have an agreement in place whether or not ATM approves the height change, that that was very.
I believe that was Chief Weston, I recall that. I'm glad you brought that up, that's important.
Yeah, because I wanted that, because he did say it, so it should be in there. Still on page two, under Article 13, the sentence that begins, Belvin would like the planning board to have their hearings, I believe Mr. Belvin added before he votes to put this on the warrant. Let me just, see, page three, page three, the last sentence, Fennessey stated regards to the disciplinary portion that Belvin would like included in the bylaw, town council provided an opinion, that should be moved to page four after the vote, which we, which I believe Mr. Belvin withdrew his motion for that, so that should be added as well. And the last ones are on page five, under Article 31, the last sentence, Hewens clarified, building inspector is building commissioner, and that they are also the zoning enforcement officer, and added that we now have a full-time building commissioner.
All right.
And then the only other thing is just, it's a kind of an important language distinction, Article 33, 34, and 35, the phrase where it says, for recommendation should be changed to put, to vote to put on the warrant only, on all three of those articles, because we weren't recommending them, we were just putting them on them. And that's it.
I have one correction as well, on page four, in the second sentence on the Article 27 discussion, it states Townsend stated that he has seen traffic problems, Townsend stated that he has seen traffic problems in other towns.
That's what he did.
I haven't seen them in Carver, I think that's important.
And we hope we don't.
All right.
So I move that we approve the minutes of March 1st, 2022, with the amendments as stated.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous, select board notes, there are none, select board community announcements. Mr. Hoffman?
I just want to continue to have everybody think of Shane as he battles his cancer.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hewens?
I want to echo that, too, that sentiment about Shane.
All right, Ms. Bogart?
None.
Mr. Belvin?
Again, you'll be hearing me saying this until this war is over, but keep your train and all their residents, their military personnel, safe during this war, and I think the whole United States should be getting more involved in this, to protect democracy. With that being said, the other thing, just to give you guys a heads up, today I signed a legal agreement with the Carver, Marion, Wyram Regional Refuge Disposal Agreement, with legal counsel now, so we have a new legal counsel for the district. Our former one has, is retiring, and after town meeting, we'll have a new one, so it's, we're moving forward in the district.
Thank you, and I just want to congratulate, once again, the fire officers who saw it sworn in tonight, and thank them all for their service. I also want to keep Shane in our thoughts and prayers, and with that, I would intitate a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second, discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, everyone.